The IT worked with me all the time, too.
Okay, we are going to get started. I, who's, okay. I will call to order the March 18 Hutchinson City Council meeting. Please call, roll.
Richardson, Garza.
Here.
Fast.
Here.
Magers.
Goss.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have Father Ted Blakely from Grace Episcopal Church to lead us in prayer. If you could, please come to the podium.
Dear most powerful and most compassionate God, we are gathered here in this place today to engage in important work on behalf of the people who call Hutchinson their home. May our discussions and deliberations be guided by your wisdom, your patience, and your compassion. May everyone's voice be heard and understood, but especially those voices that struggle to be heard elsewhere. Because what we long for is for Hutchinson to be a community where everyone is blessed and where everyone knows that they belong. I offer this prayer in the name of Jesus and in the power of his spirit. Amen.
Thank you.
Proclamations. Are there some?
I didn't see any, no.
I didn't think there were. Petitions, remonstrances, and oral communications.
Do we have anybody in the audience who is here to speak and public comment? There will also be time prior to certain items on the agenda to speak if you so wish. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Richardson, sorry. Garza.
Yes.
Fast.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
7A, consider an ordinance repealing the existing Chapter 16 taxicabs and substituting provisions therefor. Paul Brown, city attorney. Counsel, you have before you a proposed ordinance. You've seen the original draft. I also provided a redline copy to show the further changes that some had requested. Some from the, some from the police chief and some from the council itself. And primarily what we're doing is updating the taxi cab provisions to really kind of modernize them somewhat, to have proper licensing, to have proper insurance, and some provisions about the qualifications for the owners and qualifications for the drivers. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
First of all, I want to just say thanks to all of the staff that worked on this. I think this is something that we've talked about for a while and I think this is, if not getting it right, it's very, very close. There were a couple of things that I wanted to note on page 16-3. It does say on item F or point F in painted letters, and I was wondering if that should say painted or vinyl. I see both, and I would hate to.
Which, which provision?
Oh.
16105F?
16105F, yeah. I don't know that people really paint that stuff on anymore. I feel like everything's vinyl, commercial applications on trucks.
We can add over vinyl right there if that's what you'd like.
And I appreciate the addition about child safety seats.
That was actually Chief Burley's suggestion.
And one thing for clarity, I noticed that it's said throughout the entire document, it's stated in three different ways, prominently displayed, conspicuous, conspicuously displayed, and then another manner. And it seems like they all mean the same thing, but it says, it says the, it says the same thing in three different ways. I didn't know if that was.
As long as they show it, we're not that concerned about it. It's for the passengers.
Okay. Did you guys have any additional questions?
I'm good with it. Thank you for the redlining. I think this is a, comes down to being a public safety issue. And we want folks to be safe. I think, for me, I know there's a lot of people that use taxis to get to work and to do other things. So I am supportive of this, and thank you, as Stacy said, to the folks that worked hard on it. And I would move to approve an ordinance repealing the existing Chapter 16 taxicabs and substituting provisions therefor, and authorize the mayor to sign. There may be somebody in the audience who wants to speak to this.
My second that.
We'll go ahead and call roll. I apologize, I did forget to.
I'm sorry, too. I jumped the gun.
That's okay. But since we have a motion and a second, we'll call.
I won't call the roll, and you can go ahead and see if anybody wants to speak, and we can hold off on that.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, please call roll.
Garza.
Yes.
Fast.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Item 7B, consider a resolution authorizing the commercial facade improvement program.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Matt Williams, Director of Community Development. I'm here today to present the commercial facade improvement program for council approval. The proposed draft of this program was introduced to you guys on February 4 and presented to the Planning Commission on February 25. Both bodies voiced support for the program. As a reminder, the program goal is to encourage local businesses to improve building facades, thereby reducing blight and increasing community aesthetics. The development of the program aligns with community priorities, as residents consistently tell us that they prioritize addressing blight in surveys and in town halls. In fact, the 2017 comprehensive plan includes a recommendation to consider establishing a permanent incentive fund to offset the cost of facade improvements. Similar programs are used across the state and country. Our program has been developed based off of similar programs in Derby and Salina. The program is proposed as a matching grant with the city covering up to 50% of eligible improvement costs with a maximum grant of $10,000. Commercial properties would be eligible for the program, but they must be located on an arterial street south of and including 11th Avenue. The Community Development Department would oversee this application process, and the Planning Commission would assist in project selection based on code compliance, property condition, project feasibility, and compatibility with our adopted city plans. Funds would be dispersed upon completion and inspection of the project. We are seeking $150,000 to establish this program beginning in 2026, with that being awarded over a three-year period. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are business owners allowed to stack any other, like, NRP or city or county NRPs with this program?
Yeah, I think any other program that they would be eligible for could be stacked on top of this.
I've seen this be successful in other communities of our size and larger, and I look forward to this just being one more agent of change in our fight against blight.
And I would also add, for any applicant, they would have to be up to date on any of their taxes or fees. So if they are delinquent, one or the other, we'd want that taken care of first.
Now, the money associated with it, is that a grant or is that coming out, we have, taking out of the budget type? Is that a grant money or is it a budget coming out of the city budget that we're doing?
This would be a grant to the business owner from money out of the city budget, I see.
We had a plan years ago, but it was just basically for facade removal, to see what was under some of these Main Street buildings. I think it was mainly for downtown. I'm excited about this because it, it shares, hopefully will incentivize people to do actually more than half, you know? So I'm excited. It's just another step in the right direction, and you kind of let the secret out of the bag. This is to help blight in our community, so.
Looking for, oh, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak about this item? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion.
I move to approve a resolution authorizing the commercial facade improvement program and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Garza.
Yes.
Fast.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Item 8A, update on disturbing the peace ordinance.
Bryce Burley, Police Chief. During the last city council meeting, Councilman Magers requested that I give an update on the disturbing the peace ordinance. That ordinance has been in effect for roughly 90 days. To this date, there has been no actual use of it, and by use, I mean arrests made or citation issued for disturbing the peace. The platoons have given me good feedback on it. One side of the House Platoon Number 1 advised that they've educated citizens five or six times for musical instruments being played too loud and then loud music. By educating them on the disturbing the peace ordinance, they didn't receive any calls back after that point. On the other side, they said that they've used it about three times, same thing. Did not require another callback after the education had been received by the individuals that were disturbing the peace. All officers feel that that, having that disturbing the peace ordinance allows them to effectively do their job and to keep the peace where we like it at, and so that's where we're at right now.
Did they feel like the ordinance is adequate, or was there any feedback on adding any additional measures to it?
Not to, not to the date, no. They felt that it was adequate, and it's done exactly what they needed out there, so.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions from council? Thank you, Chief.
Item 8B, Hutchinson Residential Revitalization Program Operations Agreement with Interfaith Housing.
Matt Williams again, Director of Community Development. I'm here today along with Clint Nelson, the President of Interfaith Housing and Community Services, to talk about a proposed partnership on a residential demolition program. We at the city are committed to improving neighborhoods and addressing issues of dilapidation. Yet, a significant challenge in this effort is that these deteriorated properties often get tied up in lengthy legal processes and before they can be addressed. So to actively tackle the issue, our proposed partnership with Interfaith would streamline the process by reducing the need for public hearings and bypassing the long tax delinquency process. The initiative would provide funding to Interfaith to acquire dilapidated buildings, residential properties, with the goal of demolishing them and transferring them, the cleared lots, to the land bank for redevelopment. We think the program presents several key benefits to the community, including time and cost efficiency. Residential properties selected for the program will be based on those deemed to be the most unsafe by the building official. If Interfaith is unable to acquire the targeted property, they will move on to the next most dilapidated one, and the one that could not be acquired would then proceed through the traditional condemnation process here at city council. Our goal is never to displace residents, but we do have a duty to ensure that their living conditions and the community as a whole are safe. The program would be administered through the Community Development Department, and our hope is to launch in 2026. The initial funding for the program is $177,500, and is projected to cover the removal of 10 dilapidated residential properties over the course of a year. The program includes some funding to go towards rehousing efforts, something that we will be working with our community partners on. And the development of the program, again, aligns with the community priorities like I talked about earlier, with residents consistently prioritizing blight reduction. The 2017 comprehensive plan includes recommendations to develop a targeted demolition plan that maximizes the reuse of properties. We are just seeking comment for this tonight, comment and questions. We will be bringing this agreement back at a later date to formally approve it. But with that, Clint, would you like to say anything about the program?
Evening, Mayor Goss and council members. Clint Nelson, CEO of Interfaith Housing Services. Yeah, just to follow up Matt's overview of our proposal here, wanted to share with the council kind of where this thought and initiative came from. So we have had, Interfaith has had some moderate success in pursuing deeds and ownership of vacant and dilapidated properties over the last year. We actually had, within our ARPA budget, we had demolition as an eligible activity. It did approach the city to leverage some, a few city dollars about a year ago to specifically go after a few of the worst residential properties on the list provided to us by compliance and code enforcement. I'm pleased to say three of our demolitions that we completed within the last year were towards the top of the city's list of worst residential properties. Two of those had experienced a house fire. One of those was structurally compromised. It's, it's, as you can expect, it's very much case by case. And one of the main challenges a lot of times is connecting with that ownership entity, whether that be out of state or somebody that has just kind of turned a blind eye to, to their property and the situation there. I think often the owners do tend to, you know, kind of ignore the issue because they know that the cost that they're going to incur to remove that property. So as a local nonprofit, I think we can approach that from a little different angle with the owner and offer resources and assistance to resolve the issue rather than, as Matt mentioned, the alternative is the legal and condemnation process. So I'm excited at the potential opportunity to just strengthen the partnership and hopefully work with the city on cleaning up some of these vacant dilapidated properties. Matt mentioned the rehousing piece. We're very much heads up to the reality that at some of these homes in the community that really are inhabitable are housing individual residents. Pleased to say Interfaith is working right alongside New Beginnings and some of our other nonprofit agencies to hopefully circumvent that issue and find alternative housing options. Just as important as removing the blight is making sure that residents have a safe place to live. And that's going to take, often take some relocation funds and just some, some extra efforts with a nonprofit to, to work with the individual. But I do think we could, we certainly should pilot this next year to explore it. Hopefully have some, some good year one results and kind of expedite the process of cleaning up neighborhoods. The, the long game, and not included in this request, is once we remove a house, how can we fairly rapidly infill that lot with a new property, a new entry level home? And also, you know, goals that we're currently working on. So I appreciate you concerning the request and very much appreciate our partnership with the city of Hutchinson.
Mayor and council to expand a little on the rehousing efforts. So within the draft policy, we've assumed, say, 12,000 per residential house to demolish. Say if it's 8,000 is the real cost, that the 4,000, and if, say, someone were living there, the 4,000 remaining would be applied towards rehousing efforts for that, for that individual. So that's, and if there's no one living in there, then you just kind of bank that up. And then eventually, when you run across someone that is happening to live in the house, now we have money that's available for that. If we end up using all 12,000, there is still a separate line item of 5,000 for that. And finally, and outside of the policy itself, we'd also be working with United Way on this effort. Lacy is here in attendance. But we would try, exhaust all reasonable measures that in the event that we do encounter individuals occupying the residential structure, that we would do everything we can to, to work with them on that. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, real quick, does this work for commercial too or just, just residential?
So the interface piece would be residential only.
Okay.
Yeah, just to touch on that, we, we're still planning to bring back more properties, more commercial properties that are in really bad shape for the council to look at at a later time. Okay.
And this would not begin until included in the budget, assuming it passes in its current form, and then it would start January 1 of '26.
Correct. If you guys are interested in the program, we'd bring this back as part of the budget process for 2026.
I, I love this. This went very quickly from a meeting over donuts and coffee with some nonprofit partners to having a real action plan together, and I think it just speaks to the motivation of all of the partners and that, the first part of the conversation was, how are we going to help the people that might be affected? And I think this addresses that, including Mr. Vegas's remarks, not only with compassion from, I know the care that they'll get from our partners, but also it puts money behind it. So we know that, that they will actually be supported. And I just thank you guys for moving on this so quickly and giving us something to consider. I look forward to seeing this in action and sitting here in 12 months from now and being able to look at some of the success stories. And hopefully you've already got foundations poured for something on an infill lot, or who knows how quickly it'll move, but. Well, you can make it happen quick, I know. But this is great, and thank you for your, for your heart and quick work on this. I think that's all I have. Any remarks from council?
I'm excited as well. I think it's all about having the right people in the room, the right people working together. We do have a lot of organizations that have different roles in the community, and here's a great example of people working together and the city saying, hey, how can we, how can we help? Or how can you help us? And it seems to be, it seems to be like a good plan, so I like it.
I agree. I'm excited about this, and it shows that Hutch is going to, we help ourselves and the people here. And it's about time this is coming on. So you start going to the house, and I'm excited about it, and it's great. Okay?
Do you need us to approve this tonight?
Not tonight. I'll just take your comments. I'll probably take this to Planning Commission as well to get their comments and bring it back to at a later time.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, we will move on to the next item, please.
Item 9, report of city officials.
Mr. Garza, you're up first.
Yes. Okay, on March 8, I had a meeting there at the Church of Life. Freedom Life, right?
New Life.
New Life. And then I had 15 residents come to my meeting, and also the mayor was there, and Councilman. Richardson was there, and we had a really good meeting, and it was over there on Bee and Plum, and it was a great meeting. So hopefully we can get some more people to come. The zone is being sold. They're getting ready to sell it. We couldn't have it at the zone, but we'll get it together and get it back to 56,000 people that it was used to. Also, on Saturday, the 15th, I went to the high school on a Saturday. They had a great string orchestra concert. Seen a lot of people there. We also back our schools and show them what Hut, what the. We also back our schools and show them what Hut, what the schools mean to us, back our kids in sports and that, and seen a lot of residents, it was great. Other than that, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Fast?
Enrico and I spent a few days in Washington DC advocating for our city last week. That's why I was not at your meeting.
I'll let you go this time.
Okay. Anyway, met with Senator Moran, Senator Marshall. Tracy Mann's office sent a staffer to visit with us, but we talked about some upcoming things, and, and I think that it was productive for the city. I won't go into a lot of details, but I feel like when we do, we always make connections, and, and one of the connections we've made is, we'll probably save the city about $600,000 a year in remediation wells. So I think those kind of connections are productive, and I'm glad to be a part of that, and, and glad to know those senators and to have their ear. I, I would like to say, it was, it was refreshing, and this is a opinion piece by Councilman Fast. I noticed who showed up when we had a gas explosion, and it was pretty much one person. Senator Moran stopped by. He heard about it, he stopped by. I don't know if we got any other calls from any local legislators or congressmen, whatever, but anyway, I think that, that speaks a lot. I'm not, I'm not endorsing him for any election or anything, it's just a, it's just a, just an observation. I appreciate his involvement in our town and, and the things he does, and, and all of our local officials. I know they do other things, but it was just nice that he cared enough to stop by. That's all I have.
Thank you. I had an interesting conversation with, I don't think he's an owner, but he's a, he's a resident, and he had bumped up against some issues with murals versus signage, and I think that that's something that the council should think about and perhaps take up in future meetings. Just to revisit our current code and how that fits the needs of Hutch. As we talk about public art and investing in downtown, I think people are keen to see murals downtown, and as we see with Salina, what's a mural versus an advertisement, and how that can turn sticky pretty quickly. So that's something that's been on my mind. The other, another item is brick streets, and I know that we have additional meetings with more departments to talk about budgeting. We currently fund that at $25,000, and I believe we have a plan within the next 12 months to redo the unit blocks of East and West Avenue B, which was actually news to me, I didn't know that was coming up. So that's something that I'm curious about, and you don't have to answer the question tonight, but I will be asking if that's the appropriate amount to be funding that, how many blocks we still have yet to do, and what those, what the condition of those is, what the condition of those streets are. So yeah, Brick Street, Brick Streets has been on my mind. Also, restriping, as things are starting to turn green, and we're investing in planting and beautifying the city in different manners, it seems like restriping is something that is lacking in town, and its curbs, and its parking, and its, I tried to take a mental note and started a note on my phone also, not while driving, but when I pulled over, and I eventually had to stop because it was like, it's just everywhere, everywhere, every intersection has, it seems like it's, it's wearing thin. So I'm curious what our restriping plan is, and how is that aligning with, maybe with our street improvements, just to get the most bang for our buck. We also, a couple of council members and Mr. Vegas and other city staff attended the fire banquet on Saturday. Lots of awards were given out, and, oh, there's chief. That was a really touching event. I love how you recognize your staff for everything that they do. I, I enjoy attending that event with you guys and, and learning more about your organization and the camaraderie that you guys have built with each other. It's, it's amazing to see. So thank you for the invitation, and, and the dinner was wonderful. And I don't think I'll be attending any more events because soccer is starting, so we'll be at, we'll be at Pee Wee Soccer. So, and with that, I will yield to Mr. Vegas.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I did want to echo the statements as well, particularly the, the DC trip. It was very good to meet with our federally elected congressman. It was a worthwhile effort, and we did put on our best sales pitch for here's what you could do for Hutch. And so some of it was our remediation wall efforts that we're trying to get out of the business of doing. So if, if that plans out the way we're hoping, it would be $500,000, $600,000 annualized that we would save. So that is real money that would be saved from that. We also talked a lot about potential rehabilitation efforts out at our airport, and part of key for that is to really spur some economic development, but also taking advantage of the US Senior Open that's going to happen in the next couple of years. So what can we do to build up our airport capacity, whether that's tower rehab, or taxi, or runway rehab? So there's a lot of federal monies out there for that type of effort, so whatever we can do to help offset our costs here was the goal. So it was a very good trip, glad to go. And I also do, I, I was very moved as well by the ceremony, and I do appreciate the gesture of giving me the chief's helmet. So, and in, in terms of brick streets, question for you, Mayor, is it, is it more along the lines of rehabilitating what we have, removing what we have? What, what is the sentiment around brick streets generally, just so we know how to craft what, what you'd be interested in?
So it seems like we have a plan somewhere, and I'm just curious what that is, how do we assess the streets to figure out what path forward is best for either paving or for taking them up? And how do we determine that, that they're necessary to do anything at all? I think there are some streets that are, it's obvious that something has to happen. And with that, what other repairs would be considered, like the median islands and things like that? So I'm just curious, what's the total plan? I'm sure I would have more specific questions once I see something and have something to react to, but.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can bring something back. I would say generally, at least with most peer municipalities, they try to eliminate brick streets. Typically, the easiest way is you just pave over it. So bricks, brick streets are generally pretty stable, I mean, you get little dips here and there, but paving over is one of the more common methods. But we are trying to take a holistic approach, because Cecil did inform me that there were some neighborhoods that wanted the brick streets, which is also a pretty common experience that other municipalities have. So it's not out of the ordinary, but I have seen where, I'll talk closer to the microphone, where some municipalities have said, okay, if you want brick streets, if that is your request, knowing that they're more expensive, then you'd have a special benefit district for the maintenance of those brick streets. Therefore, it's not, everyone else isn't taxed for that. So I have seen a lot of those, or at least a few of those employed. So that, depending on what you're looking for, I wasn't really sure.
And it might be something that we talk about in a, a bigger session and allow for more public comment, but I also want to ensure that the brick streets that are, for instance, on B and, and C and down in this area and south side of town are preserved and respected in the same manner as they are in any other part of town. I don't know how much is left of Hyde Park, that's truly brick in that area, but just, I think people do want to save them when possible. They are beautiful when they're taken care of, and I think that, that's something that we should talk about in a larger session and, and get more public input. And I feel like we probably already have a plan of how we're assessing what to do and when, so I'm just curious what that looks like.
Well, living on a beach, on a brick street, I live on B Street, they have a lot of holes. I mean, your car's going like this and like this, and so I would, one of the concerns I would have is where the, where brick is decked, will they have to rebuild that, Cecil? Come up here, Cecil, please? So would they have to take that out and put concrete under there and build it up, or what?
Yeah, so typically that would be the process. We would evaluate, why is it dipping? If it's just age, was there a tree root or something underneath at one point? But that would be typically, we would remove all the brick, come back, pour concrete underneath, and then restabilize the base, and then put the brick back over that.
So in your opinion, if we have one hole, and we just fix that, will we later on have another hole down, down the street?
That's part of the problem with brick streets is, I mean, they're just, they're, when they're first put in, and brick streets are, they age well until they don't. The surface underneath starts getting that wavy pattern and stuff, and once you get to that point on a lot of brick streets, then it becomes very expensive if you want to fix the whole street, because where do you stop? You, you fix that one dip, and then nobody realized that just beyond it was another one that you didn't feel because the other one was so bad. When you fix that one, now they start feeling all the rest of them. It's just kind of a continuing pattern, so to really address those, we, we do need to get a comprehensive plan on how we're going to look at those. As Mayor said, or manager said, if you really want to, the easiest way to fix them is to pave over them, because they do make a good base, but for those neighborhoods that do want to preserve them, then we need really take a big, long look at how, and you're really going to have to kind of put that into sectors and say, okay, we're going to fix from here to here this year, and then from here to here the next year, because with all the other projects we've got, where do you stop?
And what's the, and, and I would be curious to talk about, what's the funding mechanism? Because $25,000 a year of, I think the line item is brick replacement or something like that.
So what I've been told since I came to this position is, what that has been is kind of a building fund. I don't think we've really tapped into it much yet for a bigger project. It was to start building some money up so when we do tackle those bigger areas. If it's the smaller maintenance stuff like that, that pretty much just comes out of the street department's budget for the concrete, for the repair, but that particular line items were put in place so we could build up to do a bigger, more inclusive.
Right. I, I figured as much, so that's, I, I have additional questions, but I can type up some, some of those, and yeah.
All right, thank you.
I know of one good brick street in this town, in my opinion, a good brick street, one. So I, I mean, I, I know down where you live, it's terrible, so.
And I know for a lot of other municipalities that if they have historic districts or some type of overlay, that's typically where like the brick streets would then be preserved, because due to the unique charm or nature of whatever that neighborhood possesses. But generally, if they're outside of those, they eliminate them, just due to the high cost, unless there's a special benefit district that's applied. So I haven't put a whole lot of thought into this, I didn't think about brick streets until right now, but I do know that that's how other municipalities do it.
I do know they repaved it right here by City Hall that used to be a brick street, right? And they just repaved it. As far as I can tell, it's holding up pretty well, isn't it?
Generally, they do.
Yeah.
And it went down on that side, too.
Yeah. It's going to be a big discussion, trust me.
I'm sure.
Anything else, Mr. Vegas?
Yeah, I was going to turn it over to our finance director.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. I wanted to give an update, update on waterbill.hutch.gov.com where you pay your utility bill. We switched to a new vendor in July of '24, and it's been pretty user-friendly until recently. We've been having some problems that I've been working with the vendor on. They've been able to fix a few of those, such as updating a saved payment method or viewing your bill. Some customers weren't able to view their bill. So those have been fixed, but some, the main issue is regarding the feature add to cart, and when you go to pay your bill, you can either add to cart or checkout. Add to cart is made for if you have, like, you're a landlord and you have multiple properties you need to pay on. That is airing out for a lot of people, but only in certain browsers and only certain times, so it's been very hard to recreate and fix. So the solution for now is just to hit checkout and to try to use Chrome or Safari, because those browsers have less issues. They are working on a long-term fix, and they're going to add verbiage to our website tomorrow to let customers know to try those, those options to try to get their bill paid. If you still can't, give us a phone call or email billing@hutch.gov.com, and if you have a screenshot, that helps us send that to the software developer to get that fixed quicker. I also do want to say that they have had an exciting update to their website lately. We have added the feature to text to pay. So when you go on there, you can add your payment method and your phone number, it'll text you the day before your water bill's due. If you want to pay it, you respond, and then your bill's paid. If you don't want to pay it, you just let it sit there until you do want to pay it. So that is, that's a great new option that I'm going to work with the Public Information Officer to publicize once we get those other problems fixed. Are there any questions or comments, things that I can address?
I don't have any. Thank you.
That's it?
Okay.
I move to jury.
Second.
Garza.
Yes.
Fast.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.